I call to order the regular meeting of the River Falls Board of Education. This meeting has been properly notified. Do we have any visitors or delegations who would like to address the board this evening?
Hi, my name is Erin Bulkey. I'm from the River Falls FFA. And I just have some boxes of food and cards over here for you guys as a greeting from the FFA. And the FFA one night, all that you found with FFA and all that you can access right now.
I call to order the regular meeting of the
Oh wow, thank you.
Thank you so much.
That is very kind.
Very generous.
Thank you.
I'll just say that in a year where so many things are unpredictable, the appreciation of FFA is something we can always count on. It's very gracious of you to remember us and to thank us this way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a pleasant treat.
Anyone else? We're going to adjust the agenda order just a bit because we think that our Wildcat Pride recipient is going to be here and we would rather wait to give it to him when he's here. So if he comes, give me the sign, alright? So we'll move right into informational items B. And the first one is the superintendent's report.
I'm just gonna remind the board that with the sunsetting of our strategic plan, we've really never had a kind of a formal recap. And in January, I hope to have some things together to provide you with at least an executive summary of some of the highlights of that strategic plan that was in place from 2015 through 20. And we'll have some discussion at that time. So just a reminder of a coming attraction in January.
Alright, thank you. We will move on to administrative reports. And the first one is Mr. Luke Key, who is going to present some more information. I'm going to give some background on this, especially for our community. For quite a while now, the administration and school board have been exploring additional ways and opportunities to support our kids in terms of their social emotional needs as well as their academic needs. One of the ways that administration is proposing to do this is by creating some additional flexibility within student schedules, which then has implications for the number of required credits for graduation. So at this point, it's already been passed by end program and the board has requested some additional information to understand how this policy change will be implemented. And that's what Mr. Bulkey is going to do tonight. So thank you.
Thanks so much for having me, Dan. And I just wanted to, I shared this with you a little bit earlier in the day today. This is from the presentation we had last Monday night with some student profiles, just to show you how adjusting our graduation requirements can impact students. These are all student examples that we have currently in our building. Thanks to them, they allowed us to kind of share those. And so I don't want to go through them specifically, but we picked two from each of the quarters that we have, whether it was the social emotional developments, whether it was the academic piece, or whether it was the college and career readiness. And how the current graduation guidelines don't necessarily meet the needs of all of our students. And what we're doing is broadening that path. We're really trying to make it for all students. And so here we have, in our social emotional side of things, you have a student who is a junior, works with high levels of anxiety, does a lot of different things to take care of his siblings at home, and didn't get off on the right foot, so to speak, in their freshman sophomore year because of some trauma in the household. And because of that, now that student quite honestly has to worry about every single credit. And for us, looking at that student in their junior year, this student is a very bright student, works really hard, has a CNA license already, is looking to go for a nursing degree, but really feels under the pressure of the 30 credits that we have in addition to taking care of his siblings. And so again, when we look at trying to be flexible with our current requirements, what we currently have in place at River Falls High School is a very small margin for error. And again, we are doing a great job thanks to Renaissance Academy and the high school staff as well, that we have over a 98.6% graduation rate. But we're still worried about that, again, 2% and 3% of student body that are meeting what I would say are state recommendations and our state standards, but are not meeting our localized standards that would be considered graduation in terms of the diploma. So this young person is doing a phenomenal job. And again, but worries about the stress and anxiety messing up right now. And even though they're doing well, they're worried about that. I'll go just to another academics side of things, just to give a little bit of that. Here I have a senior coming through a single household. Again, is looking at weekly therapy, but again, stands out in our school as in terms of a student who's been working in a variety of distant, different areas, just transferred from another district. And so we've done some credit agreements with that particular district and looking at it. And again, we provided additional flexibility for that student so they can have those opportunities. And again, from the treatment side of things, we're trying to take care of that student first and foremost, but they have all the potential to be very, very successful here at River Falls High School from an academic perspective. Well, go with another student. This student just approved for early graduation at a 28 credit requirement. I took it upon myself to do that. This student has a 3.67 GPA, is looking to go into pre-engineering school, works about 35 hours a week right now, and felt that all the credits that we had offered from a pre-engineering program, he has exhausted. And so he would like to be a first semester, I'm sorry, second semester freshman at UW South this year. And again, we brought that forward through Mr. Benson and myself to try to prove that to you. So again, we've shown a variety of different ways for students, whether it's from a college and career readiness standpoint, whether it's from a social emotional standpoint or an academic standpoint, that the decision you've made or are going to be making tonight as a board with our graduation policy will impact so many students in a variety of different ways for the right reasons. Looking at it from a staff support, we've talked about this and we've worked through this for roughly almost four plus years in talking through that with our staff and our building leadership team. We have a few of our elective departments are a little bit worried about it. Thanks to Mr. Daisy, last year when we presented to you about this time of year, we found that there'd be about a three to five student average in the electives, but only a two student average in the core areas. Looking at our full enrollment, we're blessed again to have an increasing enrollment with that, that we're not going to be losing staff. I think our staff are worried first and most about that, that they would be cutting parts of their faculty members and things of that nature. In fact, actually will be far more closer to our district averages related to that. So a lot of our staffing concerns were related, I think, more towards the student class averages. But again, it's been a small percentage of our staff. Our staff have been extremely supportive in looking at a whole student perspective and not, again, finding, as maybe Mr. Miller said last week, having kids take the class that they feel forced to take because they're taking elective credit in one form or another. In terms of future staffing needs overall, how this will serve students, what we're looking at is, this again provides flexibility for kids of choice and voice. For the most part, what it does is it allows us to build upon our RTI program to provide interventions for students not only in their focus, but hopefully during these intervention blocks with licensed math and language arts teachers and teachers in the future. So again, as of right now, we're not asking for any additional expertise or any stance. If we are able to build it within a master schedule, we're going to continue to do so so students can receive literacy interventions and math interventions moving forward. And that would be non-special ed students that we would be talking about. Again, thank you so much for your support over the last few weeks. It's great, we appreciate it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Kit, I have a question. I realize I didn't ask this last week, but it seems to me, you're talking about some of these students, that there are circumstances this year that are unique because students in the middle of a pandemic, should they graduate early, not graduate early? You may have students who want to graduate early who, under any other circumstances, may not, or vice versa, someone who may want to stay longer because they don't want to start another university virtually or those kinds of things. My guess is that we're being as flexible as we can given COVID. I mean, we're doing that with grading and other kinds of things. And we are with their circumstances for our graduation as well.
We are. You as a board, you have an option to actually waive graduation requirements the last two academic years. It's something that our council and staff has actually asked me about, not so much at our building, but we are worried about some of our Renaissance Academy students in terms of the credits. And again, the credit requirement that we're requesting students to have above and beyond the state minimum is nearly six and a half. And so one of the things that we continue to talk through both with Mr. Silver and myself is looking at whether we should be applying for that waiver or not because we would otherwise have to hit our 30 threshold. And so we have to do be very mindful of students in a pandemic who might be helping their families out with various means, who have all met the state requirements. And again, it's not about a diploma per se, but it's about what the state recognizes as a diploma for us that I think we need to be very mindful of in this context.
So what is the timeline on this then? Because my understanding was that this change would go into effect in the fall of 2021. But that would not necessarily help our students currently. So you would use the other avenue to
You would have to use a waiver or for us to look at determining whether or not we have an administrative discussion in terms of moving away from our current graduation policy of 30 credits. This is something, again, separate. I want to make sure that you understand that this is for future academic years, but it's something that our council team has been looking at.
So you would need that administrative authority now?
No.
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 Okay.
Not as of yet.
Okay.
And I just came across, I guess, literally late last week, something we were here discussing around. I said, as a parent.
Okay. Would you come to us in a case by case? Okay.
You know, I think that, you know, in the midst of a pandemic, we prepared to make lots of adjustments and exceptions because, as I said last week, every policy has a process for exceptions. And we don't write policy to exceptions. We write policy that allows for exceptions so that policy addresses the largest thing. So I don't have a problem with that. I think I had my say about the other last week. The one thing, though, that I think that I wanted to say again is, as you know, because you hear me and I think the other principals hear me often talk about, we're, and as a board, real concerned about those students who are struggling because of their family income, support at home, transitions that they're going through, all kinds of things, illnesses, all of that. And I think as a district, we focus on those. The high-flying students, the ones, Bob mentioned them last week, typically have parents pushing them out there and have them. There's a group of students, and I think I've mentioned this before at committee meetings, that I really get concerned about because the attention seems to go to those two groups. We have a large group of students here who, they're doing okay, they're quiet, they stay out of trouble, they don't need a lot, they don't ask for a lot. They graduate and they move on. And the reason I'm concerned about those students as well is that one of the things that as a school district we need to do is challenge our students beyond, as I mentioned last week. We don't focus on the minimums. We focus on pushing every student as far as they can go because that group of students, we don't know where they are 20 years from now and what kind of opportunities we've limited for them because we didn't encourage them to do the best that they could in high school and prepare themselves for what they're facing later on. So I worry when we start, and again, this just goes back, when we start pulling back and focusing too much on exceptions here, that's a group that may end up on the short end here because suddenly the conversation is about minimums and what you've met and can you graduate? And gee, you could get out here early.
And as a school, I think that we are performing the top 15% of the state. And I think when we look at those other top 15% of the schools that are there, they have far fewer graduation requirements than you. And I think, again, it comes back to how we service those students and what we do with those students when we have them here those four years. And I think our staff and our teams, Kate's all doing an excellent job in doing so. And I expect that we will continue to improve and get better at that.
So one of the things that we talked about last time, Kit, is that to be able to make use of the opportunities that we are creating for our students by having more flexibility with graduation requirements, it's going, it requires additional support. And we also talked about that that's going to be something that will emerge. It won't be full-blown to your vision in the fall. But I imagine for this to be able to start growing at all, it needs to have some of those things in place. And you are confident that with restructuring, let's say, some of the ways that you are using staff for staff, that you'll be able to do that, so that this has a really good chance of being able to be an additional support for students, not just making it quote unquote easier, but an additional support.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
And then the vision is that in time, we will even go beyond what we have in place in the fall to support these students as well as our students for whom the 30 credits is already a responsible pathway.
Correct.
Or 32. Other questions or comments at this point? This is discussion only, we will get to the motion later.
So Kit, you feel like from every level of students that we're talking about, what are hot fires or kids that are struggling? You feel like this is a better situation for their, for all three circles, right? Social, emotional, academics, and college career readiness because of the flexibility and because you can individualize this. And we're talking about every student.
Correct. So again, fitting our vision and mission of being a leader in personalized learning, whether it's students heading out to Khan Center, Stanford, or whether it's students heading out to internships or work or military, we feel like this is one to allow our staff to serve students in a much better and greater capacity. So again, some of our students flat out just need time and space. I'm going to be very blunt honest, they need time and space. And if we have, if we look at four-year institutions and things, our students are afforded more time and space than what we daily school here specifically than they ever have before. And they have to make great use of that time and space. And I would much rather have my own child practice that time in terms of making good use of that time in this environment. And again, our kids are stressed. Our kids are working extremely hard. And then I can think of students who need time and space in a whole other avenue. Students who are taking care of their siblings early in the morning because mom and dad are working well before they get up. Or flexing their schedules in one form or another so that they can be successful here in time that they're here.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Kit.
Thanks for your time, Chris.
Okay. It is now time for us to return to our Wildcat Pride Award. Mr. Bulkey?
You want to come on up, Mr. Bulkey? So we've got a Wildcat Pride certificate today presented to Aaron Bulkey. And I'll read here, "The Wildcat Pride Award is in recognition of the hard work and leadership of Aaron Bulkey, special ed teacher at Meyer Middle School. For the past eight years, Aaron has spearheaded the annual tradition of Penny Wars the week before Thanksgiving break in an effort to raise money for food items for the food shelf. For one week each year, the students in their TAs compete against one another to raise money and food items for the River Falls Food Pantry, raising nearly $47,000 over the past eight years. In addition, students typically bring in over 1,300 pounds of food each year. Aaron's compassion and hard work leading this event has made an immeasurable impact on the families in our community." Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. He's also about as humble as they come. He's well deserved, as I mentioned. He's leading the charge with our Penny Award. The crazy thing about this year, normally we do a golf tournament, we get the, for the winning TA. There was no exception. We raised almost $8,000, $8,300.
Yeah, so each dollar we raise, the pantry can buy about $5 worth of food to their vendors. So, you know, when we put it out there to the kids, whatever we raise each week, you know, each year, times that by five, and then that's huge, huge amount of purchasing power. So it really goes a long way. The food is, and personal care is, is good, but you know, the money is driven by the relation power of it. So it's been amazing to see how much they're getting.
Yeah, so without us, if a TA actually went out to the Really? And obviously, currently, yeah, but the TAs are also getting used and involved. It's, you don't know, they're very, very caring.
Thank you, Aaron. That, this is the kind of thing that makes us who we are as a school district. And it doesn't just happen without people who are willing to take on the projects and get buy-in and encourage students. Yeah, I have to say, it's great to hear that this was such a successful time, even when you didn't get the reward of volleyball. It speaks really well of our students.
Yeah, and like Mark said, it's, you know, I do the behind-the-scenes stuff collecting money, but it's the TA teachers that are out there growing up the business. It needed to do it. Sixth graders, you know, are traditionally our biggest school, but even this year, everybody walked away, all five grades, any previous record. It's beat volumes with community and parents.
Great. And our teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our student rep report. Dylan?
It's almost that winter break, as everyone knows. So it's been pretty exciting. We've been virtual for a few weeks now. And I know personally that it's been really nice to just have that consistent schedule. I know a lot of kids are doing a lot better right now just being able to have class every day and learn every day. I know personally, I have, I've taken a few tests online. So that's been interesting to see how different teachers format that, especially with the time limitations, only having an hour compared to our regular, like 90 minutes or whatever it is. So that's been fun. There's a lot going on to school. The student equity team is back up again finally. So that's also been pretty exciting to be able to be involved in that again. And I'm really passionate about that. So I think kids are ready for break to just have some time to relax and hopefully will be back in school.
It's really interesting to hear how the predictability makes a difference for students and the consistency of the schedule, even when it's not the kind of in-person learning you would prefer.
Yeah, hybrid was a lot of just wondering like, what's going to happen next? I don't know, I felt like there was a lot of just unknowns going on. But when it's, everyone in your class is on the same schedule, it's a lot easier to just like, understand what's happening and be able to move day to day.
I'm glad to hear it. Thank you very much. All right, we are going to move on to a presentation about the social emotional support. Andy Mark?
Thank you. Good evening. I think last week, Stacy requested that our F team provide some presentations about social emotional support in each of our buildings. Tonight, I'm going to represent amazing policy department at Meyer Middle School. And I want to start off by saying, a lot of our success has to do with the support that we've gotten from the school board in terms of the resources that we have available to us. That means hiring a third counselor, that means having a full-time school site. And I'll share with you all the great things that they're doing. And I can't be more proud of our policy department. On the left is George Seager, who's in her second year. She's our seventh grade counselor, Stan Busek. Next to her is our eighth grade counselor, Gary Campbell, sixth grade. Something unique about what we're doing is those counselors get to loop with those students that are here. So they get to know the families of the students really well because they have them for three years. Then we have Summer Bowers, our school site, does an amazing job. And then Twilight Dean, who's our policy secretary, is a department team as well. I want to begin by sharing with you what we've continued to do this year, last year, that I'll share with you what's good at our middle school in terms of social emotional support that we're providing. First of all, last two years now, teachers start off here by meeting. They call them minute meetings. I thought it was a boring idea. I don't know what this idea was, but they spend one minute with each kid just to make a little quick connection, talk about likes, dislikes, those types of things, just to make that initial connection. We're able to do that in person this year. That connection's through virtual learning. If we were going to go full-time on this list of names, we'd be doing the same thing. And continue this quarter. So we'll talk about how we're supporting our virtual students here in a couple slides. This will be our second year teaching our connect course. This is a very intentional course regarding social emotional learning. And each of our students has this course for seventh, eighth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. This is part of a presentation we made last year as to why there's a need for social emotional capital in Meyer Middle School, not just at Meyer Middle School, but now nationwide. First of all, we have the students that we have that support with that. Our model aligns to a career essential skills that we identified as a district a couple years ago, as well as it aligns to character education, aligns with their equity framework. And then the resource that supports this model is the castle model. These are the five competencies that we're teaching through this connect course. One of the nice things about our schedule at Meyer Middle School is we have team time. We take full advantage of that team time. Our counselors are in team meetings every single day, but not every day. Once a week, then they meet with us, and they have a team once a week, then they meet separately as a department once a week. So I really do think there aren't, there are hardly any kids who want to do the practice at Meyer Middle School because they're so on top. So I really do like there aren't, there are hardly any kids going to do the practice at Meyer Middle School because they're so on top of it. Mentioned the update meetings and then our weekly cycle. And the last thing that they started last year, I'm not sure if that's the social emotional department, our N S G S A, provides a preschool store for, for students. So what's new for this year with social emotional support? This year, we created a, a council, I should say, we created a self-created S E L screener. Just set up in September. We set up a set of responses. And then that then is being used, first of all, for starting counseling based on student needs. I'll explain that in a minute. Referrals for outside support, individual counseling. And then one of the things we thought for our survey is, is this, uh, an eighteen point two percent, which is a great number, or they're proud of that number. A student's primarily connected with an adult at the school. So they're really intentional about this this year, identifying where those students are, and then the teachers are trying to make intentional tracks with those students. The other thing that's new this year is the newsletter. Uh, I linked it, I, I just sent the link to you this a little bit ago, so you should be able to see the newsletters we've kept out this year so far. And then they've also created a Google reform for referral for students and families to choose to go off that's online. This is the change in showroom. They received a thousand dollar grant and they do their meetings here and they will think about this. I don't, I don't have a TV I can use to monitor. Actually, our virtual schools can join these as well for all. So that's the nice where they can just run right in to both groups. This is something new. I, I thought this, I didn't know anything when I had a therapy dog, but uh, Summer Barker, our school site, has taken this dog through obedience classes. She brought the dog in last week. I, I didn't foresee what an impact the dog would have in a space. I'm, I'm, I don't know, sorry, I haven't done that thing. There's so many people coming in. This is the dog, the dog responded really well. It's a beautiful dog, it's a sneaky show. So that's really cool. So she's got a whole calendar for the year. You know, the dog's going to be need to meet it. So people can follow the dogs. So that's pretty cool. Uh, so our counselor's goal this year, we all have professional practices, most is to increase the amount of groups. So Summer Barker's now full-time at Meyer Middle School. She's taken on some of the group work as well. So we've, we've got ten student groups covering five different topics, eighteen student groups with ten different topics. Uh, we, the council, uh, association recognizes that those constant weeks need probably six weeks. Uh, these are the groups that are already completed this year. So the general identity, anxiety, impression, study skills. And then upcoming weekly groups, you can see those. And then ongoing meeting Mondays are correctly, and it's actually been six ball. So this is a, a big undertaking and, uh, but again, we do have a resource to do it. And so this allows for the professional practice this year. That's obviously an open meeting resource. So in terms of our virtual school students, to start the year, our counselors check in all of our virtual students. Uh, form is also second parents offering additional counseling opportunities. Weekly online counseling sessions, students need support. And then one big key is our virtual school teachers are in communication with their counselors as well. Uh, so for example, they see a kid that's, that's needing some support, give each other a counselor, and a counselor give each other a student. And then as I mentioned, our virtual students are also participating.
Mark, do you have that same confidence with our virtual students, uh, as far as anyone slipping through the cracks or that type of thing? Do you have that same level of confidence?
Yeah, it's a great question. I would say between, well, first of all, we have referral more. So parents, if their kids are struggling, they should be reaching out. And then I think our, for two virtual school teachers over here, if they're sensing things are going up, they're in communication with the policy department. So I would, I would say yes, but it's, it's hard to tell. We can't see the kids every day. Uh, it's different when you see them face-to-face because body language is not always the same. Uh, so it's a really good question. I don't, I don't have a great answer, but I would.
Yeah, I can imagine.
I'm pretty intrigued by the number of groups.
Yeah.
Pretty impressive.
Very ambitious.
It is very ambitious. So are, are students participating in them? I mean, I'm assuming that at times they're invited and it's advertised so that there would be a variety of ways for students to actually find either her way to the group. How does that work?
The survey that was set up, it's actually been expanded a lot. And then that's how they bring them in. So there's a lot of that can be, because there's a, that doesn't mean you don't pull kids in that, that they self-identify. A lot of students, they self-identify in this survey.
Mark, have you been in any conversations about, so what's next? These kids leave eighth grade and, and they're used to this environment. Are, are you having conversations with the high school staff too about how this might, how these kids might land here and realize, oh my gosh, it's a different world?
Yeah, so I know the policy department, we, 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 our policy site, they, 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 right?
They generally, over a month, they meet. Or they're living in, 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 in elementary, or elementary, or elementary, or elementary.
And the other thing we, all we're seeing, we're mentioning, the first one, the policy transition, transition, or it's just like that, the policy going into, who basically will do one certain kid, identify on a spreadsheet with, with a need might be a group safety, and that communication was, was sizable and spread out.
You know, because the reason I ask about that is having had three kids that go through this. The biggest, um, pull them up short times are entering middle school and entering high school because they're such, it's such a change. And it's why I, I love alignment so much. I love K through twelve alignment, pre-K through twelve alignment because it makes it less seamless. Because if we're not careful, they might as well be transferring between districts. Sometimes it can be so abrupt. The culture, the culture here at the high school is so much different than the middle school, which is different than, than elementary schools, et cetera. Without that communication and that alignment, it's a lot harder. And I think contributes to a lot of the stress and those kinds of things that students pick up early in your high school career because suddenly, um, it's a different world and they don't have the support they want.
How much are, are virtual school teachers in touch with the kids, the middle school kids where they would likely, where they would likely catch kids that are struggling, like in a small group or individually in a typical week?
That's a good question. I, I don't have to answer that. I'm not sure how they catch them. I guess it's probably how they use them more. But, um, either that, or maybe, well, I, I didn't get a chance to.
Are the teachers in touch with them though multiple times a week or once a week where they would have an individual conversation? Not necessarily about this, but they would know what the kid is struggling.
I don't know.
Okay. I would be curious.
But any parent of a virtual student who is concerned about their student's wellbeing, there's a clear avenue to be able to reach out and to get the kind of support, if something is disoriented.
Which is, are, and then they would reach out to us. That's mentioned with the policy department, who's got that line, and they didn't have the qualification to do it. There was meetings as well.
Great, thank you.
Yep. I apologize, but I'm going to ask you two, Jackie and Jennifer, just to come forward and say that again because with our people at home who are listening, it's really hard to hear when you're farther away. So if you wouldn't mind coming up, and Mark, I'm going to thank you, unless somebody else has anything more.
Well, I'm sure we were standing. Present this for this year, this association pod, our, our class. Uh, so we're going to do that this fall.
That's great. You know, I, I want to say before you leave on this, it's really terrific to be able to see the, the contribution that having a dedicated school site at Meyer Middle School makes for your work and the expanded, um, to be, for school managers. It's clear that you're able to do some really great things. Thank you for taking advantage of that opportunity. Okay, if you could just say again what you did so that it gets caught up on the mic. Thank you.
I just wanted to elaborate that the, um, the contact that the teachers have with the students at the middle school is in that whole group format. So they're meeting multiple times a week in that whole group. And then they're meeting in that one-on-one individual. Whether that is to work with them on specific content areas, whether that social studies, math, or science, to do the, the, kind of one-on-one conversations with the students. Um, and reteaching where they're struggling, uh, as well as whole groups. So at the elementary level, we also have like regular, uh, evening lessons. But at the middle school, it's really that whole group, the hybrid period, and then those one-on-one connections so that teachers are making those connections multiple times, um, each week.
So it would be important for the students then to be participating in those opportunities to receive the support when they're in the virtual school. That makes sense. Jackie?
And for any students who we believe or if they're request, who are into the area of the disability, we are required to evaluate that student. We're in the process of, to make a few students currently right now, um, walking through the process of appearance, and, yeah, whatever it is, like for visiting.
Good. Thank you very much. So there's a real consistency in terms of identification and supportive students in our virtual school as it would be the students that you serve from your department in face-to-face.
Thanks, Mark. This is really impressive. Yep, thank you very much.
So the, the, the plan that, tonight, the board heard the middle school presentation. The board will not meet next Monday, but then the following three meetings, you'll have an update. One from the high school, and then another evening, there'll be two elementaries. And then another evening, there'll be the last two elementaries. So we'll get an update there as well as from the REN in the coming weeks. Specifically on the topic of social emotional support for all of our students.
So Jamie, our virtual student, school kids will be with the school, that, that, that specific school will talk about their virtual kids too at the same time.
All means all. All of our students.
Perfect. Yep, thank you.
Good. All right, anything else on that? Okay, then we're going to move on for our E I D diversity committee update. Nate and, and Dave?
All right, we're excited to provide out a monthly update, uh, E I D, our equity university. Our guiding purpose is to look at the equation that our system would provide guidance to stakeholders to help address those issues. This month, uh, the meeting that we took really was more bigger and reflective, with E I D leaders. What's our role responsibility? And, and we took a couple of approaches to that. Some of the updates that I want, we want, right? Opportunities for learning.
Yeah, so the opportunity is that it was contacted by a woman named Brenda Larson and Paul Shepherd, who are both parents in this district. And they, uh, Dave and I talked to them about offering an anti-racist, um, class for parents called How to Talk to Your Children About Race and Racism. And so, um, we're currently working with Brenda and Paul to develop something to put into community ed, community education in Lake County, very, very, ish. Um, so that's in the works. Brenda is, I forgot what school district she works for, what, integral, uh, and she is, they're a childhood parent educator. So she has expertise in talking to parents about kids. And then Paul Shepherd works for the university system over in Minnesota, dealing with diversity, um, policies, procedures, and their system. So, uh, and with them, I think that's going to be a good opportunity for parents in the school district. And then we also offered up, um, a couple of, there's a speaker series that runs in the St. Croix Valley Foundation. Um, the next one is coming up on January twentieth, so you can just wait for that. And there was two more, one more, Mark, and one more, Dave, to talk to people more about, in the mountain valley.
Uh, and then the, so the, the aim purpose of our meeting was to look at work of Dr. Tino Love. He wrote a book, he wanted to be more than survive. Uh, really, we started that conversation around moving beyond the concept of, um, Black Lives Matter, really looking deeper, what does that, what does that mean as, as a teacher? What does that mean as an organization to really, um, identify, based on, support kids with, they love that they met. Um, and, and the conversation was, what we did is we watched a video link from Dr. Tino Love, and we had a discussion around it. Uh, I would say that the themes of the discussion, uh, we're, we're probably moving towards aspects of it.
Yeah, um, the people, the people in the committee specifically, uh, I think are, are all in a spot where they uh, understand the work, except that the work in self-communication love just offered an additional view on kind of some next steps. So we provided, uh, five books, six books. Um, for community numbers to, to take and read if they'd like to. And so that was kind of the, the culmination of, of that meeting. Uh, moving forward, we're going to work on a timeline for the subcommittees. So there's three subcommittees, uh, at the E I D level. There's the holiday committee of deep awareness that's working with, uh, the, the health curriculum. And then, uh, dress code. So moving forward, we're going to try to create a more solid timeline where we can look at recommendations and some activity before the, this year, so that's coming up. Also, um, highlighting some work that's, uh, going on around the district. Uh, I had the pleasure of working with, uh, the high school, middle schools, like, uh, student community, which has been a really great part of, of, of everything. I know that Mark's group at middle school continues to work on asset-based practices and everything, and models, and how to develop, and implement in school. Uh, and A school is having conversations about holidays lately, the season. I know that, um, Chris, who's working on asset-based pedagogy. Chuck's school is continuing to work on resupplying their, their library. Uh, and then had a conversation with Chris over the other day about their ongoing work with pretty much a big part of our, of our marginalized, um, community. So they're doing all the things that, uh, that you'd be about, you know, so it's, it's good.
I'd say one, one of the most powerful, you know, one of the most powerful, I think, that we got, listening to Dr. Love, but also our E I D person, was the level of exhaustion that I, that, that, for, for, for marginalized people, that it's the exhaustion of, 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 of their tails. Uh, all of the extra layers of stress that we're dealing with. But from both Dr. Love, but also from our committee, you mentioned it. Uh, so it's exciting to hear, uh, some of the steps that we're taking, uh, with this team. To support that, to really, uh, lead into the work because there's a lot.
Should also mention the monasteries also doing work. Yeah, so the monastery working on some, uh, some K five ideas for, including equity and anti-racist ideas into a K five curriculum and how to kind of start teasing that in a little bit more. As to things like identity development and other ideas of power and other things. So, but all at a smaller peer level, so. That's the whole district, monastery included.
And it's a fairly, it's a, it's a significant number of people from the community who are participating in the conversation, even if they're not formally members of the E I D committee. I think significance is highlighted as well.
That was a critical goal this year, was, was to, um, have a more representational group, uh, and have, have voices that have a department. And we're, we're reading virtually, which, uh, in some ways is challenging. Uh, but in other ways, it, uh, it does allow some flexibility for participation. I think that creates some participation this year. It's hard to, because they're higher, I think, or that is, it's in your schedule, it's a virtual meeting or a meeting.
And it will be fully gaining more community members. We had the initial, we members that were interested in the last couple of months, we got one or two weeks time, so.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Oh, it's, it's a very thoughtful group, right, that is participating. You guys do a great job of leading that, facilitating that conversation. Have we been able to move forward as a whole district with the cornerstones this year or with the load of the years? Is that, is that kind of what you're, is that part of the core stones? Yep.
That's a little bit of that cornerstone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work and for your presentation. All right, it's. It's been our practice for the last well weeks and months to combine these informational items E and F into our first action item under on five. So Mr. Benford.
Our weekly update through these slides comes to, again, just to reiterate, adding this slide that we want to make sure that we continue to highlight and place emphasis of the district on the importance of social emotional support for all of our students and parents of the learning environment. And I just want to hear some of the dates for those upcoming presentations at the forward level. St. Croix County has a new website, so that's where this slide is from. It's a different slide than you're accustomed to seeing because of their updates. Again, I won't read all of the data points specifically for you. You can see here on the left side how they've broken that out and then illustrated those numbers on the graph provided. A little, again, I'm trying to find a little bit of Ray Jones sunshine again, a little bit of, it's good to see that we continue to see a decline and escalation in these numbers. As we all know, COVID cases continue to be of great concern nationwide in our state and our region. But this slide gives you the quick snapshot on a one pager of the St. Croix County numbers. Pierce County, seen this before, again, we're here on the number of new confirmed and probable cases. We've had gone on a little bit of a decline and then saw another spike. For a couple of weeks running, we're seeing a slight decline, again, large numbers though, not to minimize things by pointing out a slight decline. There certainly continued to be large numbers here with new confirmed cases by week. University, again, they're in the remote learning environment. They still have, I think, Cindy, 2,000 kids on campus.
The guess is less than that, close to 1,000.
1,000. You can see their positivity rate under control. I added this notation here, had the campus in the past because while we've highlighted the growing concern as the positivity rates for Pierce and St. Croix continues to decline, remember that these numbers are a reflection of the entirety of cases. And I didn't break this out separately, but the, you know, today's rate, today's test positivity rate would even be higher than seven-day average, be higher. This is a fairly new snapshot from a improved website information available at the state DHS. Here they do rate it down into seven-day average, again, pointed out last time, which is by geographic region. And so we're beginning now to present to you the running polls. We have three weeks worth to share with you where we line up here in our entire region. That's not just a school district number and compare that to some of these surrounding regional communities, by the way, of the network. Here's counting school district data, and then we always go from this point to share with you what does that look like internally here. This traditional slide breaks out all of those numbers from quarantine and isolation, who are staff and students, those contacts. And then this is perhaps a better look at that. We're in, now we're up to 10 weeks, we're showing the running summary of basically that last page, broken down into seven categories, where we're at each of the last 10 weeks, and then showing the overall average as well. Any questions about the data from our area, our region, from our district? We always conclude here by getting some more confirmation. Here's where we're at. This is where we would be proposing if there are any changes, if we have any changes to present this evening. As you know, grades nine, 12 at home distance learning, they're going to return on the 11. Seven and eights in the hybrid, PK through six, five days a week, face-to-face, and we continue with winter athletics.
Jamie, when does the semester end?
Semester end date, January 2015.
So we're coming back just for the last week of the semester, basically, right? Is that a good thing?
That's what I, I did not know that was the last.
Finals.
We talked with our staff about preparing for the finals week essentially, where early home or kids will be ready for finals Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, if members of it, you know, don't allow us to come back to the hybrid or student staff. Right now, currently appreciating consistency of four days a week. We're actually still talking about commeratives together, but running some transportation.
I'm just thinking, if the consistency is there, we're into the semester, does it make sense, at least at the high school, I don't know about the middle school, but does it make sense to end the semester online and then start the second semester? But I'm, just a question that you guys got to decide then.
I think if it's finals week, I know that kids would probably rather take tests in person. So if it is that one week to do that, I think that'd be better than trying to take four tests online, like in a row. I don't know. That's what I think.
So the last thing on this slide, I just put up a couple of reminders. We've talked a little bit about the second one here about youth sports and facility use. We will revisit that with the board in January. Currently, we're saying no, no facility use. I know the board received an email for your consideration related to elementary quiet specifically and whether or not they can do some more aerobic kind of exercise. Now, the weather disallows them to be outdoors and whether or not we can do some more there. So our principals will be communicating with those elementary quiet staff, discussing some of the possibilities, putting time limits on that, making sure we have physical distancing. We'll see what we can get comfortable with to not go from if we're currently in a stage red, which means no activity, no aerobic activity, we're not going to be anxious to go to stage green, which anything goes. I think we'll try to find a stage yellow somewhere in the middle where we can feel confident that it's okay for us to have some of that aerobic activity, so stay tuned on that. And then lastly, the, I don't remember if I had this on last, I don't think I did, is consideration for additional home spectators. The issue there, home is key word. So our own parents and or families, when in the gymnasium with our current limits of two tickets, two admissions to an event for one player, we have an entire side of the entire gymnasium that is empty. So we're going to contemplate whether we want to come back and see, you know, maybe we give a third and or a fourth ticket to a family so that mom, dad, guardian, and grandpa or sister could also come to an event like that. So gotta stay tuned on those three things. Just wanted to put it on the pre-air screen for you to be pondering. Feel free to give me a call, let me know between now and then if you have any specific thoughts along those lines.
Does WIA allow us to have different numbers or spectators for visitors compared to hard?
They do.
They do.
I think one of the concerns we had is that we would go to a school that was wide open. You know, in other words, the home team had lots of people there, our kids would be going there, and I guess I would still want to see us be very similar to other teams in terms of our amount of tickets we give out to our, give out to our students and families. I don't know. That has gotten a little, I mean, I know when it was presented to us for fall sports, it was Raleigh kind of said, this is the way the Big Rivers is, is moving forward kind of in unison. But my understanding in talking with people that I know who have kids who have participated in athletics is they can attend. I think they, I think I know somebody who attended either two of their son's football games at Big River Schools and have already attended maybe at least one of the basketball or had the opportunity potentially to. So my understanding, without being inside the building, is there might be more variance there than, you know, everyone is in the same policy that we are, at least, again, that's my thought, just based on what I've heard.
A little variance, again, it's not just a Big Rivers conference. Obviously, we play other ones, so it does vary. We're not sure what that might look like, but what we do know is using a gymnasium or a venue, there are other concerns where might there be social gatherings in the commons area? Might there be social gatherings in the parking lot? So it's not just the end part of coming to the event itself, but we have found that our parents and spectators have been very compliant with, don't do the additional gatherings, and we're just considering some additional flexibility for the spectators, kind of the theme of family being able to see their sons and daughters participate. So we'll pick it around, we'll think it through, take out the measuring tape, we'll be very specific and not overdo anything, but just want to get along and put it on your radar screen just to be thinking about that.
How are we doing now, what, a couple of weeks in? I know at least a few of the sports have had competitions or maybe all have a, any cases, incidents, all the teams are still?
We're careful in public settings like this to identify and say out loud that the, this is just an example, this is an imaginary artificial example, that the freshman girls' basketball team had one COVID case because that's such a small cohort group that due to privacy laws and so on, we have to be really mindful on some of the specificity of that.
Sure.
But I'll try to answer your quest, question as transparent and honest as I can by saying that we have, we have suspended two of our athletic teams. We've taken a timeout because of a small number of COVID cases. Again, continuing our practice, being very cautious, trying to be proactive. And so we have responded with our athletic teams as we told you we would, in the same manner that we do with our classrooms. We're being safe and proactive. You know, we need to sit out on the sideline for a couple of weeks and then get back at and transition our way back in, but that's where we're at.
Timing with the conversations about the physical education classes and the youth sports is pretty good, right? Because that next conversation is January 4th, those are probably on hold anyways until after, until after break. So we should answer for those pretty well, pretty quickly.
I would agree. They would like to be in our two days now. Truth is, they've been patient, but they're also asking if there's room for more consideration and the reply is then, yeah, let's get through the holiday season here, let's get through the break period, and we will revisit. That's been our response to their question.
Are you finding, what's our overall finding about our student athletes adhering to the compact that this board?
Adhering to?
What in place, the compact, that understanding?
I know, I only know of very serious compliance, consistency, accountability by our athletes, by our coaches, and following all of our required mitigation efforts. The, I think I shared last week that I attended a athletic practice, two different practices, and I also attended a group practicing in the auditorium for dance cheer. And I wasn't spying, I wasn't going there to see if I could catch somebody doing the wrong thing, but all I saw was people doing great. And from that observation, that's one thing, but from Raleigh and Kit and others that are more visible and are bearing witness to the daily side of this, very, very compliant. And I think it's driven, obviously has to be driven by coaches holding accountability, but also by the athletes themselves, and they know that they have to do those mitigation efforts, not because they're being told they have to, that they believe and understand there's some effectiveness to those mitigation efforts. If in fact, they're going to be able to stay running, they got to do their part or make that happen. Not that it's a guarantee, not that you still can't be considered a close contact, and not to say that you still couldn't have COVID transmitted to you, but doing everything that you can is a part of these activities. And while in school, clearly, the word mitigation is real and it does help. Wear a mask, be physically distant as much as you can, and all that goes with sanitation and so on is being followed to the team.
Can I ask one more question just about the staffing? It looked like we were a touch higher with some of those numbers. Are we having any issues with running into or we're just able to staff the buildings the way we need to?
We have. I have covered.
Yeah.
The staffing, there have been times throughout this new year that there's been some challenges with it, but you as a board put some support behind that, allowing us to hire some permanent substitute teachers to help anticipate, fill some of the gaps. And we've gotten a little more flexible where if a teacher, for example, is considered a close contact and they're at home, if it's feasible and practical for them to teach remotely, we've adopted some of those accommodations that work. So so far, we are holding our own with regard to staff.
At this point now, a few months in, I'd say that's one of the things I would be surprised if you had gone back and told me that in August probably, that I saw that being a huge hurdle and something we would probably bump into a little bit more than it appears that we have up to this.
As I, I would agree that in some ways, maybe we're surprised at our ability to continue to do that. Again, as I mentioned, there's been a few days here and there where some of these folks administratively are stepping into classrooms and helping to cover and so on, but we're doing okay.
Okay.
The last reminder is that the vaccine does shine a little light at the end of the tunnel, but between now and the time the vaccine really has an impact, what are we hearing? Between 70 and 80% of our nation's population really needs to go through both of those shots to really get to the threshold where we have further community taking place. And so we've got months ahead of us and we have to remain vigilant. We can't let our guard down. So again, just a reminder, avoid the social gatherings when possible, increase your physical distancing, wear a mask, sanitize. We all have to do that as a community in our homes, in our school, in our community of work, and we have to just have to remain very, very vigilant in this process. We're going to get there, but it's going to be a few months.
So at this point, do we have a motion to confirm the continuation of the present learning environment?
I'm moved to approve.
Thank you, Todd. Is there a second? One second. Thank you, Cindy. Any further discussion? I need to do a roll call. Bob?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
I'm voting yes.
Yes.
Todd and Cindy, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. At this point, before us, we have the meeting minutes from the November 16th regular Board of Education meeting, minutes from the November 23rd Special Board of Education meeting. We also have minutes. We also have minutes from November 30th and December 7th and December 14th. All of those are Special Board of Education meeting minutes. We have bills that have been submitted for payment as well as employment recommendations. So at this point, do we have a motion to approve minutes, bills and employment as presented? Thank you, Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob, any discussion? A roll call, Bob?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
I'm voting yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Todd, Cindy, the motion carries. All right, we are going to have, this is an information item only, but it would be a budget forecast for the 2122 school year, Todd?
Hi. Hi. I just wanted to check you first, we updated the documents, we're going to be talking through the report of the state this afternoon. So if you want to check there, is anybody needing to copy?
What's the number at the bottom? 1,002.
1,002.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
I'm good, thanks.
I've got it.
Chad, stay close enough too, so people can hear at home, please.
Yes. So the document that we're going to be primarily talking about here today is that one report that I was just referencing. So I have put columns, labeled them A, D, A, D, E. So I'll try to refer to that where where necessary. But this is the time of the year where we begin to take a look at a number of pieces of data on student count and kind of take a look at the same budget and we pull out our management ball, try and make projections. By and large, we're always wrong on most of the details, but we end up good on this one bed and that one, and in the end, eventually we find ourselves pretty right in total. So I guess we're hoping we find ourselves in that same position next October. But there's really two key details here that they're important examples. The first is enrollment, and the second then will be what this gate will allow us or will give us in a state revenue on a per pupil basis for next year. So we'll start with the first one, enrollment. We found ourselves with the start of this school year, the pandemic, in a very different situation on a student count basis than we had in the last 24 years. We've typically been averaging about 65 students per year for the last four years. And then this year, we kind of took a step down due to some students going online, homeschooling and some other things. So this year, we went down by 50 students. So that's an interesting fact. So the question is kind of how do we take that from most recent history of all those dumb years, two, three, four, five, about what they're going to come for next year? I think working that down into two pieces, I think we come up with what is a column D, the student count for orchestration. And what it does is it's kind of just common sense look around the community and building permits that that issue can stay. And so building permits are up over last year. And we also have three very large apartment complexes that are pointing out they're two or three bedrooms, which are typically those that support a family with with kids. So when we take a look at that, that that's 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 pretty good compared to those years where we're getting our averages. So I think that's very positive, frankly, to just set out the shell. The second item that I think we're going to introduce here is that those 50 students that didn't come back to us this year, they have a lot of different reasons why they may not. But I think as you look into it, there's quite a few that have gone to either homeschooling or have gone to virtual schools elsewhere. So we we kind of have to make a determination, how many of those will be back this year? With again, of the assumption that we get back to be something a little bit more, our school day, our school year next year will be a little bit more similar to those of past. So I think when you said taking both of those into consideration, we're not wanting to stick our neck out too far, but I think we find that only that the number of our student count was in fall of 2019, which is adding that quote 50 kids to this year's count is probably quite reasonable. And so that's the number that we're going to put out there for the conversation for that to start.
And a reminder, Chad, if I can just chime in, from a revenue calculation standpoint, the formula that Chad punches all these numbers into is then based on a three-year rolling average of our enrollment. So if you're off by 10 or 20 students in this estimate, it gets rolled in with the prior two years and it's not going to have a massive impact on 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 the calculation. If we're if we're off by 30, 40, 50, 60 kids, then the story's going to be a difference. But I just wanted to remind the board that this is based on the the revenue calculation is based on a three-year rolling average of enrollment.
That's how the state does it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's good because of our dip this year.
Yeah.
Start out.
Chad, it seems to be like something in, Jennifer, was it one of the things you gave us? I was reading a 3,500 student headcount.
So there's a couple of different numbers that are all right on the headcount. There's official third party count, which is going to be for state purposes. That is open enrollment in from other districts. So headcount, so it's a idea, it has to speak to you know, it has to add back to our kids or other districts. It has headcount for preschools, for early kindergarten students. That's probably just the whole headcount, you know, 3,70 or 80, whenever they don't provide it this year. State produces that by 40%. So there was one of the three big categories that you can, well, very clearly take that 3,500 student number and reconcile it down to mine.
So 4K, you have 100 students for for the calculation, they you you count 60 students, thereabouts, right?
Because we don't get full state aid, we don't, because they're part-time.
Yep, because they're they're part-time.
So that's, so then kind of switching here to what the per pupil increase that will be allowed for us next year, that's kind of the next factor to consider. And just a bit of history to me put this in perspective is the last five years, kind of a couple of different, I didn't know revenue increase in that first year basis. For the year we're in right now, we get just another 300. For the last full year, it was about 340. For the previous two full years, it was about 200, and the previous full year for that was 100. So you can see there's quite a range, but what these also don't really take into account is also the thing what the effect of in the state's budget. And so largely, there's a lot unknown about that. I think if we're reading the state of whether it's better than it's better than kind of we were expecting. But there's still clearly, we followed some of the other recordings. The state clearly has, we have a great difficulty making across the budget. So putting putting somewhat the ability, their ability to probably give us an increase similar to what we saw this year, probably largely out of our range. So what we're proposing, and what I'm proposing is that we take the $150 per pupil increase and then multiplying that by how by how old their enrollment, that would be similar for the same as fall of 2019, and through the formula of the Jamie mention. It brings a simple $740,000 in new revenue. Now, just for the stateless sensitive, if you will, the 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 calculation is the second column D. You can see if we go with a zero, 2.3, it brings us $140,000 and so on. So this decision is probably quite a material decision that's going to have quite an impact around the decision made here next couple of months.
So if I can, just just to add again for clarity, the per pupil increase column that Chad has, it shows 0 or 150 or 200 or 250. That that represents the amount of money that we can at this time only predict and guess at what the state will give us per pupil. And as Chad is mentioning, COVID's potential impact on the state's revenue collections, tax collections and so on, they, the state, have not yet informed us, are we going to get 150? Are we going to get 200? Are we going to get 250? We don't know yet. So we are here this evening having to guesstimate enrollment, guesstimate on the per pupil increase from the state. And we, again, as Chad is presenting, 150 is highlighted in yellow to suggest that that's the number that we are estimating right now that we would get from the state, which is a lower number than we have received historically. So we're attempting to predict that we're going to get some money per pupil increase, but we're also, admittedly, we think that this is a somewhat conservative, but not overly conservative number for us to use for purposes of this evening.
Chad, the the 150 per estimate anyway is multiplied by the 3386?
You can't quite do that.
Oh, okay. Okay, I was going to say, I'm not getting that number that you're getting, okay, okay. Okay.
Chad and Jamie, have you heard anything about the likelihood that we will have a state budget this year? I'm just looking at the political climate in Madison right now, which is still pretty toxic. And there have been years when we haven't had a budget come October. Is there any, have you heard anything out there that?
There's no indication of that for Powell at all. Powell's just considered all for the financial forecast. Are the colleges inviting their time until something later comes up?
And I'm sure none of them are planning that because they all want a budget, they want to outlot their way. But it just would not surprise me, that's another scenario we needed to be prepared for. It's just the fact that the state won't have a budget when school opens in the fall.
The first, it's kind of out in February, the governor's meeting, the state's address, so that's probably the first kind of insight what he's proposing, that will probably serve.
The other, the other, kind of the behind the scenes information we have along that line is that the Legislative Fiscal Bureau, the State Department of Administration, they, three weeks ago, maybe issued a report related to tax collections and state revenue, the the revenue the state has received. And there was a little bit of good news in what those collections were, the the revenue coming into the state in light of the effects of COVID's impact on our economy. They 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 ended up a little bit better at that point, three weeks ago, than they had once anticipated.
The column D, the column D, all six, I see non-goings dollars in the current budget this year. We at this point, for our forecast, we will, we've got about $454,000 in this year's budget that was funded one time thing. Much of that was, I think, school teachers, things that hasn't sold the budget for 2021, 2022. Or two, the expenditures that we're going to be budgeting for.
Didn't we also roll ahead two buses in?
That is a second column.
Okay.
So in total, so this is one time, sorry, it should be non-goings, and the one time we do have a number of things.
Okay.
Just a contribution.
Okay.
And on that, we're still working this for what how used that will be. To some degree, you can just use the budget installation, so these are the one times. I'm sorry, these are the non-goings ones, one times. So given that we won't be, we won't be budgeting for some of these items, we will have $454,000, the state government will receive this year, that actually will be built with current on what. So in total, right now, the target budget, we're working with the recommended, was about $1,202,000. That's your book, it's tiny, just for reference. So it's quite a difference.
Yeah.
Just to summarize, I think my understanding of this, so first of all, the question inversion, one pupil count, 2020 pupil count, 3336. Is that the third Friday count for this year?
That's the target.
And then it's it's, I don't know if it's really standard or typical, but let's just say it's typical to get 65 new students a year. That wouldn't be unusual, and we lost 50 this year. So what you hope, so as we talked earlier today, those 50 we lost this year, I I, you know, some of them to homeschool and virtual school. I can't imagine they're not going to be chomping at the bit to come back to in-person school. Now, some of them may have found a home somewhere else and they like it and stay. I have to believe we've got most of them back.
Yeah, the, just for clarity, students that are currently attending our virtual school, our district's virtual school, we are counting them in our headcount.
Yeah, that that's not part of that number, that 50 that we lost.
Correct, yeah, I understand. So for for me, a bit of an anomaly is that we we didn't, we didn't lose 50 stu- we don't have records that show us that 50 students have signed up for homeschooling, nowhere near that number. We we, they've they've moved.
Yeah.
They 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 aren't here.
Right.
And so again, and I'm agreeing with you, I'm not I'm not disagreeing. I wanted to first just make sure that none of the board members or people listening at home thought that the virtual, our our district virtual students are not counted in our enrollment. In fact, they are, just wanted to clarify.
I guess where I'm going is that you take kind of an average 65, expectation of 65 new students in a year, and we get the 50 back, that's 115, but we're we're budgeting for only 50. And I understand being conservative about that. And I think we've shown this here that we can hire pretty quickly. Yeah. So that's a good thing. I think it's prudent to be conservative in these estimates, for sure. I just wonder if 50 is too conservative.
Yeah.
Yeah, because when you look at it, you know, if our normalcy was, normal is adding 65 and we had a net decrease of 50, that's 115 students away.
Yeah.
This year alone. And I agree, Mike, I think we'll probably get a bunch of those 50 back, you know.
And having said what I just said, I'm not really suggesting we need to change that.
No, no.
I just think we need to be aware of the, the prudent thing is to be conservative here.
Yeah.
Because I know we can we can adapt, it's a lot easier to adapt the other way than to go back if we have, you know.
Exactly.
And and just hope for getting a lot more than 50 students.
I think, Chad, you mentioned one of the things we really need to watch. And it's a hard bunch of TVs to read, but it's the building permits, the new apartment buildings going up in this town. And unless the economy really tanks, and I don't think, in my mind, there aren't a lot of indicators that would say it's going to tank, could stall. But I think the potential that this town is going to grow with families is pretty significant. So we've built our long-range planning on. So we've built our long-range planning on what, probably one to two percent growth, and we could experience more of that, might go flat, but I just, given our location here, I think this is prudent, I would rather be really conservative, have money at the end, and allow us to do some more hires or another pay plan adjustment or something like that, but.
Can I ask one, just?
Chad, I, I do have a question, so I just want to look at the other side of worst-case scenario if we're off. Can you just remind everybody how we can cover everything if we need to, or what we would need to do?
Well, there's a couple of answers, the first one I would put out there, it is not a open answer, but it is a fund balance, to have a solid fund balance, that we have that keep, add to keeping up as a percentage for a budget, and the range over twenty-five percent, but basically under thirty percent, so we have the ability somewhat there. Another comment would be, let's just say we were, we overbudgeted by three students. Well, it kind of takes about three students to equal about a ten thousand dollar change in our revenue. So it muted quite a bit, you know, we're off a little bit, so that's probably another factor. And another is that likely, as we're moving through this fiscal year, some of that one time money that we brought to board was in September or October, we may very well be identifying that in some future plan as, as some type of insulation or insurance policy against that happening. So I'd say there's a number of answers, but there are things we can do on a one-time basis, always to get through this, because we have had to pull those in. Since we've done it, had to work at our advantage to pass, but also some other things, you know, and short notice.
Are we current with the fund balance, are we, the fund balance in terms of paying it back?
Yes, you're talking from the high school project, boiler project, what we have to spoke.
We haven't, we haven't borrowed down from the, for anything this year that would mean we're under our twenty-five percent or?
No.
Todd, I believe you might have to.
Yeah, so just the, the, the hundred and fifty per pupil increase, give me a, just an idea over a ten or twenty-year period, is there any precedent or history for there, there not being a per pupil increase? I, I know we're kind of past precedent in terms of where we're at with pandemic, but i- is that anything that's ever on the table even at the state level? Or, or is it, or would, would zero be almost off the table in, in, in almost every other year?
Approximately ten years ago, when that ten came through, we had a, we did most schools that, I think it was about a four hundred and fifty dollar, if I'm not mistaken, decrease, along with that, the state gave us tools, if you will, to bring our expenses down. First one was, like most districts, reducing the contribution for health insurance, the district was thinking, and the second was mandatory, we also, but the employer, the payment portion of pension costs, they said no more. So through those two tools, if you will, the dollars were.
Okay.
They, if you will.
But that's the only example in, in your, your career where, where there, where it was zero or below, basically?
Boy, I want to check the zero, I guess.
Pretty rare, pretty uncommon, it's not.
It may have happened on occasion in there.
Okay. Good question. Yeah, I, I guess I just was curious if, if, if it had happened two or three times, and, and obviously that was a, a pretty big, you know, legislative change, I mean, I, I don't know that that had to do as much with the economy as, as some of the politics that were going on at that time, too.
I guess if it was, that probably was the year following, that ten, because the year before that, we, there were always positive numbers, and every year after that, it remembers a lot.
Sure.
Might have been one year, those two years.
Okay, thanks.
Chad and Jamie, the stimulus bill that I think passed today, voted on today, I read somewhere there's sixty billion dollars for education in there, have you heard?
I haven't, I haven't, to be honest, I haven't searched for it, but I, I don't know any of the specifics on what kind of federal money may be coming our way in round two. The first round, we received one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and frankly, a lot of that went towards, all of it was COVID-related. I would anticipate, I would speculate and guess at this point that we will not see, would, would, that we would see less than we saw in round one. We'll certainly be pleased to receive any amount of financial support that we can get, but I would speculate that it'll be less than we received in the first round.
And I, I think another point there, too, is I, I read states were excluded from any additional funding as part of that, too. So, you know, I, whatever relief the state might be looking for in terms of, you know, again, I don't know all the dynamics, but that, that to me was something that stood out as being excluded, or, or a non-starter for some of the people, too. Yep.
So thank you, this is, this is a first time that we're seeing the forecast, and we'll be coming back to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
So at this point, we're going to move on to committee recommendations, and I'll turn to you, Alan, for the educational program committee update and motion.
Well, we had a lengthy meeting a week ago, and we followed up on it tonight, I think you were all there, but this is the, the issue of the change in high school graduation requirements from thirty to twenty-eight, and there were two actions we moved on. One was revisions to the policy regarding graduation requirements, and the second was we approved the revisions to the policy about graduation requirement guidelines, two different documents to deal with the same topic. Very good discussion, the last two times we've talked about it, good discussion again tonight. I would like to move that we approve action items one and two, both on the graduation requirements and the guidelines.
This is the first reading?
This is the first reading, yes, first reading.
Thank you, Mike. I do think I'm going to draw your attention to page thirty-one. I think that the, the section in there that's highlighted is not the utmost up-to-date, because I believe it's supposed to specify what administration means. So it's supposed to say approval by both the school counselor and school and district administration, otherwise it's not clear at what administrative level it is being, who is doing the approval. That's what we talked about last week, right? So that would be in addition, and the last sentence of the highlighted paragraph on page thirty-one, right before administration, it will say school and district, or, yeah, school, high school and district.
And then on the graduation requirements, on the third paragraph, last sentence is the desire of the school board that all students have the opportunity and support to achieve a regular high school diploma.
That should be struck.
It should be struck, the regular.
So can we make those as friendly amendments to the motion, that we would make, remove a regular, and then we would add high school and district?
Yep.
Great. Any further questions or comments? This, this is a significant change, we have to recognize this, this is a significant All right, we have a motion that's to move in second seat, I'm going to take a roll call vote, I'll start down here with Cindy.
Yes.
Yes.
Mike, I'm voting yes.
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 Yep, Amy?
Yes.
The motion is carried. All right, that will come before the board for the second reading next month. Alan, I'll turn to you as well about the second reading for policy four sixty-one.
This is just, and we, again, we talked about this at our last meeting, basically some wording, the standards that we would have liked to have set up for the academic excellence scholarship, the state said we couldn't set up that criteria, so we moved back to the previous language. So I'd like to move the second reading of the adjustment to the Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship that we talked about.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
About any further discussion? All right, roll call, Cindy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike, I'm voting yes, Alan?
Yes, yes.
And Amy?
Yes.
The motion is carried. At this point, do we have any proposed or suggested items for future board meeting agendas? I remind everybody that we already have it scheduled to be looking at social and emotional support at the other schools, there will also be a comprehensive presentation by the Renaissance Academy.
The other, the other item was the WASB conference is coming up in January nineteenth, I believe, I am the delegate, and I guess I would like feedback as to the support or lack of support for any type resolution. I think you have gotten some information on these, I just got this whole pack book today, but I'd like to have a discussion at one of these upcoming meetings here. Let's see, we could have it, well, I guess I would.
Jamie and I can talk about that, I have not received my pack yet, so maybe, but sometimes I don't get it if I'm not the delegate, so.
Yeah, and I don't know, I think I've got it, just because I'm the delegate.
But do we have to register, have we registered for the cap?
You have.
Yeah. I, I have a link that came to me as, as I, Aaron must have registered me, so I've got a, I've got a link for.
Did you register all of us, Aaron?
Could you, could you register me?
All right, I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
I haven't received anything either, so.
Who, who doesn't want to go?
You must be registered if you got that.
I, I, yeah, I, I must be, because I, I received all this information.
If it does need a delegate.
I literally just got on the mail today, so it, it probably could be in your mail today, tomorrow.
Maybe go to survey us all tomorrow, yes or no, and we can let you know, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, so we're going to schedule meetings, we will not meet next Monday, but we will meet as a special board meeting on Monday, January fourth at six, personnel will be Monday, January eleventh at five-thirty. Educational program will meet Monday, January eleventh at six, there will be a special board of education meeting on Monday, January eleventh at six-thirty. Finance and facilities will meet Monday, January eighteenth at six, the next regular board meeting will be Monday, January eighteenth at six-thirty. And at this point, I would like to have a motion to move into executive session for Stewart to Wisconsin statute section nineteen eighty-five, one C and E, for the purpose of approving twenty twenty-one bargaining goals, as well as a discussion of the school force improvement plan and related funding options. Is there a motion, please?
So, second.
Cindy, thank you for second thing, Todd, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Amy, it's closed session, so, Merry Christmas, everyone, have a great one.
Bye, bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.